Ladies and gentlemen, your panel for tonight. And now would be the time if you want to add additional comments.
Yeah, as she said, we started our look at the city manager form of government in 2007. At that time, we were seeing not a whole lot of people running for office. And we felt like that we needed to look at making sure that we had the city covered with good administration skills. So we formed a committee to look into that. Our committee came back after doing a lot of research and recommended that we go ahead and move forward, just like y'all were doing with town hall meetings. We did that. And then in 2010, we went ahead and called for a referendum to ask our citizens to vote whether they wanted to change the form of government or stay as we are. We came out with a 60-40 vote to go ahead and move forward with the change in government. I can say that it's probably been one of the better things that we have done in the city of Vestavia Hills to make that move. We were kind of landlocked and we were going to have to redevelop. And that was one of the things that we looked for in a city manager was redevelopment skills. And we were able to get that individual here on the panel to come in and do that. So he's made a big change in our community. And people that were voting against the change now has come forward and said they really appreciate what we did and trying to move the city forward.
Thank you. I would like to correct, actually, I just got a 35-year award for being in local government. That 35 years has been spent all in city manager form of governments. I've seen a lot of things happen because of a partnership between the professional staff and the elected officials. And I think that a city manager form of government serves the communities well. Well over 60% of the communities in this country, between 10,000 and 250,000, are city manager forms of government.
Again, my name is Jeff Downs and I've been in local government for over 30 years. I've had two employers my entire life, the city of Montgomery and the city of Vestavia Hills. I think I'm unique on this panel in the fact that I worked for the city of Montgomery for 26 years in a mayor council form of government. I worked for four different mayors. I loved all four mayors. They were great guys and I had a great career with the city of Montgomery. Ultimately, though, I made a decision and Mayor Zaragosa and his colleagues on the city council in Vestavia Hills hired me to be the city manager in Vestavia Hills. I've been there over five years now. And now I've experienced the manager council form of government for five years. So I think I'm unique on this panel from the standpoint that I've served at the senior most executive level position in both forms of government. And as we get into our questions, I'll elaborate on some of my experiences and anecdotes of working in one form versus the other.
Good evening. My name is Sam Gaston. It's a pleasure to be back in your beautiful community. Of course, this is going to be a local choice for the residents of Fairfield, but we think tonight maybe we can present to you information about why the council manager form of government would be best for Fair Hope and why that Fair Hope would be a great fit for this form of government.
All right, thanks, guys. Really quickly, this is not going to be a Q&amp;A-style type meeting. The questions were submitted to the panel, needed to be in by Monday, and we have 13 questions that were boiled down from that collection. If you feel as though your concern was not addressed here, you can email your question or concern to vote@fairhopeal.gov. And also, as you can see over here, there's a little box, basket. And we can pass this around. And there are some index cards here and pens for you to leave any additional questions or feedback you have once we go through all of the questions. And once again, this is informational. We are not here to present one side versus another or tell you how to vote, rather to present the facts of this form of municipal government. So with that said, let's go ahead now and get to question number one, if I can turn the page. And the way we're going to do this is I will start initially from left to right and then we'll go from right to left as we work our way down the list. So the first question, please compare and contrast the city administrator form of government with the form of city management form of government proposed by this vote. What are the pros? What are the cons?
I'm going to defer to these three gentlemen here. They're better equipped to answer that question.
All right.
I'll jump in. The city admin-- clearly, the city administrator in that form of government reports to the mayor, okay? There's one boss when you have a city administrator. He's reporting to that mayor. The mayor, usually in that form of professional government, the mayor is off of the council, does not sit on the council usually. Whereas in the manager council form of government, the city manager reports to the collective council. And in most times, that manager, that mayor would sit on the council. Not all the time, but sometimes that happens. So I will tell you from my experience, because as I told you in my introduction, I spent 26 years reporting to a mayor who did not have a vote on the council. And the mayor was the CEO of the city and I was his chief administrator, or I would say like a chief operating officer. The motives in that form of government, when you're reporting to a mayor elected by the people who sits apart from the elected body, creates an interesting dynamic. Everyone will say, "I was elected by the people. As elected by the people, I have authority to do certain things." And so the motives sometimes, and I'm going to talk stereotypically, I'm not pointing out anything about Fair Hope because I'm not familiar with the decision-making, the history, or anything. I'm talking about my personal experience. As the deputy mayor in Montgomery, which served like a city administrator, I did whatever the mayor told me I needed to do. I implemented policy. I managed people. I managed process. And sometimes the motives, when you had, when I was reporting to one elected official, could be motives that might be irrational at times. I will give you an example. As the deputy mayor of Montgomery, Mayor, I'm not going to tell you which mayor it was, but I was called in and said, "Jeff, I know there's a position being hired and I know there's two finalists for that position. One finalist snubbed me during the election, the other one did not. Jeff, you're going to hire the one that didn't snub me." I would call that because I knew the level of the candidates irrational. Now, does that happen in mayor council forms of government all the time? I can't say that that happens anywhere other than my experience in that particular circumstance. There was a great mayor of Montgomery who, for political expediency, decided, "I'm going to pave streets only in certain districts because those are the districts that support me rather than the districts that don't support me. Jeff, I want you to make sure that you do that. And by the way, we only have X number of dollars. So instead of milling the streets, let's fill the gutter lines so we can get more streets paved."
And final thought on this, so we make sure all the candidates or panelists have an opportunity to answer.
She's cutting me off. My bad. I can be long-winded.
We have 13 questions in 90 minutes.
My point being is that some of the irrationalities of politics play out more in the role, in some forms than other. I will say, as I move to the manager council form of government, there's less of those politics. Sorry.
I would agree with Jeff. The city administrator, although the position would have to be funded by the council, the position really answers just to the mayor. Under a city manager form of government, the manager is hired by the entire governing body and answers to the entire governing body. So that you have consensus building, team building with the entire council to set policy as opposed to the whims of maybe one elected official.
But also, in the city manager form of government, at least in Dothan, that is, our charter prohibits elected officials from getting involved in the personnel process. So we really and truly hire the person that's most qualified. And believe it or not, every now and then they'll raise the issue about somebody applying for a job, but I've never been told in my 35 years that you will hire so-and-so.
And question number two, how much does the city manager make a year?
Well, I'll start that off. I make $185,000 a year.
The, I think this came up during my presentation in June. I don't know what your top department head would make in Fair Hope, but let's just say if they were $130,000, you would probably want to pay a city manager at least 20% or 25% above that top department head because the manager will be carrying, he or she will be carrying a much heavier load far as supervising all the staff members. So that kind of gives you a range of where you might start somebody out in your community if this vote passes and you hire a city manager in the future.
And one of the things that we saw in Vestavia Hills is that we've got a group called Parker out of Sanford University, and they do salary analysis for local governments. And one of the things that we did, we went in and pulled that form and looked at the city managers that were in and around our area in the state of Alabama, saw what the pay scale was. It varied from city to city depending on what their level was. But we did use the format that Sam mentioned, was the 25% above our highest-paid employee.
And along those lines, will the city have to cut other services and/or raise taxes to pay for this new position?
I would say no. Each circumstance may be a little bit different, but in Vestavia Hills' perspective, neither one of those had to take place. Oftentimes, you'll hire a city manager. I came to Vestavia Hills with quite a bit of experience and picked up on some easy fixes early on and can save money to help pay for that additional position or that reworked position.
Yeah, in my first year in Dothan, we eliminated 29 vacant positions. And actually, just continued to get the work done.
Yeah, if you hire a real professional manager, they're going to cut through some of the duplications or maybe overstaffing and try to make sure you have a more efficient government because you have a professional running your organization rather than a politician. And so I think that managers could probably easily pay for their salary and more depending on each individual circumstances. But no, you should not have to raise taxes and nor should you have to cut additional services just to hire a city manager. On the other hand, you should be able to enhance your municipal services by having professional city management.
And one of the things, we looked at Vestavia Hills, we had three department heads fixing to retire. We consolidated. We knew that we needed to streamline our operation in our city, so we combined departments together where they were compatible with each other. Our public works department and our park and rec department. They did the same jobs almost, except one worked in the streets and one worked in the park. So we cross-trained those individuals. The same thing in our building officials and our fire department. We had inspectors in the fire department, we had inspectors in our buildings. We combined those two. We didn't lay anybody off. We didn't fire anybody. Through attrition, we went through and didn't replace those department heads. The other department heads, like in the fire department, took over inspection as department head. Our courts, we put it under city clerk. So again, it was streamlining our operation to help offset.
Next question, can a city manager hire employees to assist them?
Well, the way it works everywhere I've ever been in the city manager, the city commission has to approve the budget. And the budget is what dictates who you can hire. So during that process, if we want new positions, we request that. And then if they're approved and the money is appropriated, then we can hire new employees.
And same thing in Vestavia Hills. In manager council form of government, it's the council that controls the purse strings. If the council appropriates money and there's money in that appropriation to hire employees as the chief executive officer, you hire the employees with that appropriation. If the council does not appropriate the money, then you can't hire employees.
Same way in Mountain Brook, you have, the position has to be, any additional positions have to be allocated and approved by the council and the money allocated to hire an additional person, whether it be on the city manager staff or any department.
Okay. Next question, how does it cost to hire a group to divide, or how much does it cost to hire a group to divide the districts? Per Fair Hope's planning director, this can be done in-house using current technology and the council approves the districts?
We do not have districts in Vestavia Hills. We are at large. However, in the city of Montgomery, we did have districts. And we used GIS technology. We did not have to hire outside firms. And we used GIS technology and up-to-date census information to propose what those districts are as the council approved those districts.
Yeah, with each census, the last one was 2010, you're required to redistrict. And my planning staff did all of that without any outside assistance, again, using computer-based GIS mapping and the census information with how many residents live block by block.
And the council would have to approve that. The idea would be you would try to have as equal number as possible in your three districts, if all possible. But yes, with the technology that's available today, it can be done in-house with your planning staff.
And we also looked at it, our city is a little bit unique, that we are not a square city. We're a rectangular city. It's narrow and long. And when we tried, our staff went in and looked at the districts, they just were not going to work in districts for us, and so we elected to stay at large.
And I would also add that I know I would avail my staff to, you know, provide some guidance to the local staff, and I'm sure these gentlemen would also.
Okay, next question, if most of the mayor's duties will be transferred to the city manager, the mayor's salary would be reduced accordingly, and this reduction should be significant, will this be the case?
I can address that is, yes, there were salary adjustments. When I was the mayor for the first four years, I made $60,000 a year. When we went from city manager form of government, we, myself and the council, sat down and talked about it and looked at the role that the mayor was going to play in, and the mayor's salary dropped down to $15,000 a year.
And this would be a decision for the governing body of Fair Hope, I believe you have to have at least six months or so before the municipal election to set the salary for the next four years. So if the council at that time decided to reduce the mayor's salary, if you didn't have a city manager, it would be up to the council to set the salary for the next four years for the mayor and the council managers.
How can we make sure that the person the council hires is qualified?
Well, you need to have very good qualification statements. Usually, you would like to have someone who has a master's of public administration, MBA, and someone hopefully who has either been a city manager or is currently a city manager or an assistant city manager. That would be your preferred candidate. So you would want to bring somebody in who already had been running a city or been greatly involved in running a city so they could come in and hopefully hit the ground running. That would be your best candidate. Now, Mr. Downs here, although he was not in a council manager city prior to coming to Vestavia, he had immense experience and training to make that transition from a mayor council form of government to a city manager form of government. But anyway, good qualifications, because one time, sometimes some cities can make mistakes of hiring non-professional city managers. And so that sometimes would be a problem by hiring non-professional city managers.
And just remember, part of your job as the citizens of Fair Hope is to watch that process and participate where participation is allowed.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we did in Vestavia Hills, our interviews with the candidates were open to the public. We could provide questions to those candidates from the citizens through the card mechanism here. So they were involved with the interview process. I do, I know I talked with Sam Comingdown this afternoon, and one of the questions was, "Okay, what are the good qualifications?" One of the things that we did, we had that you had to be a city manager or an assistant city manager. Mr. Downs was deputy mayor of the city of Montgomery, so he didn't, according to the firm that we had doing it, he didn't qualify to beat our qualifications. And we should have hired Mr. Downs to start with. So the second time we went out and we, you know, it hadn't been smooth sailing. We let one city manager go. And then we decided that instead of using a professional firm, we would do it ourselves. And we got the right man the second time.
Now, I think that it would be good to note what extra special step that this mayor and his colleagues on the council took in that interview and vetting process, which included the hiring of an industrial psychologist as a part of that process. Mayor, can you talk about that?
Yes, so one of the things that we really felt like was, the first city manager that we had, they just interviewed through the council that we had in place at that time. When we decided to go back out, we decided to look at an industrial psychologist to come in. And we were, not everybody, but we narrowed it down to two candidates that were in our wheelhouse that we wanted. And so we contacted our local industrial psychologist. First of all, they put us through the test, saying, "Okay, what are you looking for for a city manager? What fits for Vestavia Hills?" And we filled that information out, and then that information was shared with the industrial psychologist. The industrial psychologist then interviewed and tested the two candidates that we came back with. And again, it was not just what the industrial psychologist said, it was part of the toolbox that we had, that we were using for our own. One of the other things that we did, which was unique, is we actually had the department heads interview the candidates too. And to get a good view of department heads and get them engaged in it too. But the industrial psychologist, it cost us $5,000 to do that. But I guarantee you, it was money well spent to go in and do that because we were able to get the right man for the city of Vestavia Hills and the right man that was going to do the job that we, as the city council, were looking for.
And I'll tell you, as the one who went through that, it was a series of about five different tests, a structured interview, and a report was generated that I did not see until some two months after I was hired. And when Mayor Zaragosa, who was one of my five bosses, said, "Do you want to see your industrial psychologist report?" I said, "Yes, I do." And I took it and I read it and I said, "Oh, my goodness. They, this guy knew me. He knew my inner soul and knew who I was." That was very helpful to make sure that there was a good fit between the desires of the elected body and me as the hired leader to implement their wills, their policies, and help work together to push our city forward. And I can tell you, as much as Mayor Zaragosa has flowered some praise, I'll put praise back onto my mayor and council, that we are a team. Does that mean that everybody always agrees? No. But it means we work together for the common good of the city and it's, the relationships are very professional and very good.
The city of Daphne fired three city managers in a row, four consecutive years. What would prevent Fair Hope from going through the same?
Let me address that. Daphne, in 1988, voted to go to the council manager form of government. And they hired an individual who was a local person, did have a PhD in finance, but really had no experience in city management. And within less than two years, he was terminated by the council. And then they hired another individual from another region of the state, I mean, of the nation. And he came in and he apparently, after a couple of years, had a little drinking problem in a city car, which led to his termination. So there was really only two. The last city manager was the person who closed out the form of government. Because the mayor was opposed to that form of government, he got enough voters to sign the petition to put it on the ballot in 1992 to put it back, go back to a mayor council form of government. He was successful in getting the number of petitions signed to put it on the ballot. Less than 10% of the voters of Daphne voted to change the form of government in 1992, back to a mayor council form of government. That is also, though, the reason why it's imperative that you hire good people. Now, I will say to you without any reservation, sometimes being the first city manager in a community can be tough because you're trying to establish new procedures, more professionalism, more accountability, better efficiency. And so sometimes, being the first city manager can be tough. For instance, when Aniston went to the city manager form of government in the late 1960s, early 70s, they went through four city managers in their first five years, although one was an acting city manager. And finally, on the, the next city manager stayed there for 11 years. But you have a lot of continuity. Average tenure for a city manager is seven to eight years. Mr. West here has been city manager of Dothan for 14 years, and he is the longest-serving city manager in Dothan history. I've had the privilege of being in Mountain Brook for 25 years, and I've certainly, when I came there, the longest-serving city manager of Mountain Brook was 10 years and 10 months. And I thought, "I'll never be here 10 years and 10 months." And next thing you know, it's 25 years. But anyway, that's the story on Daphne. Daphne only gave it four years, but they also made some bad hires. So it's critical that you give this form of government a chance to work, realize there's going to be some bumps along the road because you're changing things that were done as, this is the way we've always done it. And then two, you know, like I said, you've got to make sure that all possible, hire the right person that's a good fit for your governing body, but also for your community.
And I don't think you can underemphasize the chemistry that needs to take place between the elected body and the community. There has to be a sort of a marriage, and everybody has to get along. Making sure that there's a good fit is imperative, especially if you want continuity of leadership over a number of years.
I think one of the things that we saw in Vestavia Hills too is that sometimes we politicians can get lean in one way or the other. The city manager concept keeps it straight and narrow and it keeps it where we're working together. He presents information to us from the legislative side of the body to do the pros and cons of whether the project is a good project to move forward with or what do we need to change in that, or do we need to make changes in our policies and stuff like this with a different view from that standpoint. So it's been very good for us.
Next question submitted, what are the pros and cons for this form of government?
Well, the pros are that you would have better service, more professionalism, greater long-range planning, strategic planning, land use planning, vision for your community that professional management would bring to Fair Hope. Now, I'm biased, but the only con I can see about it is that, you know, if you don't hire a real professional manager, then you might not get what you're paying for.
Well, and I think too, if you look at it from your political leadership, having someone professional, a manager, run the daily operations of your city, it allows the city, the elected body, to focus on that vision, to focus on policy, and to also focus on constituent service. And somebody else will be making sure that your garbage is picked up, that when you dial 911, somebody shows up.
And I think, I think if you look at, again, the process, the process of making policy, when you have a appointed city manager who has to respond to five bosses and make those five, in my case, it was five, other cities have different sizes. But you have to make them all feel like and know that their voice is heard, and you come back and you try to reach compromise and you try to reach a direction that's good for the entire city. Whereas in the mayor council form of government, which I saw-- Whereas, in the mayor-council form of government, which I saw for 26 years, there was much more dispute and arguing between the executive elected branch and the legislative elected branch. It's a totally different dynamic. And I have to tell you, having experienced both, that there is, again, I think, better decision-making as a general rule with the manager council than the mayor council form of government. The con is that somebody may say, "Wait a minute, I don't have, I, as an influential citizen, don't have the same connection to city government through that elected official who is my, who I have influence with and want to get my particular idea more readily heard." And so some people may see that as a negative, not having that type of access. But I think that the collective decision-making of the collected elected body brings better decisions to a community.
Okay, next question. How does a district city work? How would districts change the council's relationship with Fairhope residents?
Well, I think I'm the only one up here with districts, so, you know, believe it or not, it works remarkably well. You know, Dothen is your typical southern city. We're about 70,000 people. You know, we have our haves and our have-nots, but I have to give it to the group that I have now, that yes, there are some things that they're interested for their district, and that's why they were elected. They were elected to look out the issues of their district. But by far, they all agree that the whole goal is to take Dothen forward. You know, it's sort of like a boat, a rising tide floats all boats. And I think that the group that I have now and the groups that I have worked in in the past take that approach to it, and everybody understands, yes, I have a district, but there are a lot of things going on that has a positive impact for this community, and they work that way.
Although I've worked in Mountbrook for 25, and we do not, we have at-large elections in Powder Springs, Georgia, as well as when I was an assistant manager in Aniston, we did have districts. And the way that you try to make sure that the city, who's the city manager and the mayor, to make sure that they're looking comprehensive at the entire needs of the community, and it's also trying to build teamwork with the individual council members who may only represent a certain part of the community, but to pull together, make sure their districts are being served at the same time that the entire city is moving forward. And that is the role, really, of the mayor and the city manager, to look at it comprehensive. Under this form that you're looking at, you already have two at-large people, and then there are only three districts. It's not like you would have nine districts, you've got to compete among nine districts. So this is really a pretty good setup, two people at large, and then only three districts that you would have to contend with.
One of the things, we looked at the City of Vestavia Hills, and I mentioned it earlier, is that we are a rectangular city. We couldn't make the districts work, and we had a situation where we all have it in every municipality. Some say, "Well, I'm not getting everything. I'm a stepchild." We annexed a community inn called Liberty Park, and it was outside our borders. We had to go through the legislatures to get that. All that private, all of that was private property, and they took care of everything themselves, the roads, the rights-of-way, they gave us money for a fire station and stuff like this. So they were private, but their citizens complained because we were not doing anything. Well, we couldn't really do anything there. The other was Coleman Heights, which we annexed in 2002, and increased the service out there, but we still were not doing enough. We really felt like that districts were not going to work for us, so we went ahead and went at-large so that we were looking at the big picture.
Next question. How long does it take a city manager to get up to speed on city operations?
Well, I've probably, out of everybody up here, probably had more jobs, been with different cities, but I've always, when I show up in a new community, I've always given myself six months to get a feel for my staff, to get a feel for the community, and to get a feel for the elected body. And I think anybody who comes in immediately and makes a lot of changes has got to understand that there is a learning curve of coming in and learning, as I was told, the Dothen way.
I would defer this question to Mayor Zaragosa. He was one of my five bosses. How long did it take for me to get up to speed on city's operations?
Probably about three months to get up to speed. One of the things that we saw in Jeff was, he was very motivated, so he had already started researching as he was applying for the job. He was already coming to the City of Vestavia Hills to look around, to talk to people within our community. So he was already there, engaged to make things happen. The other thing is that we embraced Jeff as a council, and we shared information with him. I don't know how many days that Jeff and I sat down daily and just met on what's going on in the City of Vestavia Hills, and he was up to speed and knew the players that were in Vestavia Hills right off the bat. So, you know, it goes back to hand and glove, get in there, get the citizens involved with it, and Jeff did that, get the city council involved with it, and then the expertise that he took to find out about the city itself.
I think you've got to plan your arrival strategy. When I left Powder Springs, Georgia in 93 to come to Mountbrook, I gave my former employer five or six weeks' notice. But in the meantime, I came over and spent at least three different days over that period of time with all the department heads, different major staff members of the City of Mountbrook, and then one day, all the elected officials, to find out what was expected of me, and also what was in the needs and the desires of the departments. Plus, you know, nowadays, everything's online, you could research about your budget, your land use plan, your personnel manuals, et cetera. So you can get a great start and have so much information. But I would agree, it takes usually three to six months to get a really great feel of a new operation, but then at the same time, this also will depend on your staff to give you guidance during those first several months.
Last question. If the vote passes, when would the change happen?
Well, I can speak for the City of Vestavia Hills. Again, the vote was 2010. The city-manager form of government didn't go into effect until 2012, when we had the election for the city government. So it was 2012. Now, one of the things that we did do was go ahead and bring, we went ahead and interviewed, hired an individual, went ahead and brought that individual in ahead of time, and he and I shared responsibilities within the community itself and got him up to speed.
That's correct. If this vote passes, it will not take, change the form of government to 2020. There was a contract about how lo, and there was a question about how long is the city manager's contract? Did you want to answer, ask that question?
Go ahead.
Okay. How long is the city manager's contract? Well, mine's day-to-day, so, but mine, I do have an employment agreement, and if the council fired me without cause, they'd have to pay me four months, but I basically have a day-to-day employment agreement.
I have a three-year contract.
And I have a three-year contract.
And that's one of the things, by state law, that's, municipalities can only give three-year contracts, or three-year agreements.
But I will say this, this is unusual. Most city managers only have an employment agreement or a contract where they're only paid anywhere from two to maybe six months. Usually, city managers do not have contracts like school superintendents, so if you fire the school superintendent within a year and a half of their three-year contract, you still got to pay them for the next year and a half. That's usually not the case in city management. That's usually, you know, they only get a certain amount of severance pay. So, and that's also one of the benefits, remember, on the city-manager form of government, if you have a city manager that's not being responsive to you or to the citizens or to your governing body, you can make a change that next day. If you've got a mayor who's not responsive or who's not doing a good job as the administrator for your local government, there's not a lot you can do till the next election.
You were going to say something?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, it is now, before I move on to final thoughts for the panelists, I want to give you the opportunity. Do we have any questions? If so, I would like to pass around this basket so you can submit them. Do we need to get that going? Shaking head, no. All right. Well, let's move now to final thought or closing thought from our panelists, and you guys will have five minutes. I'll give you seven.
Thank you for having me. No, I, it has to be an individual city feeling for what you want to do. Like I say, we really studied it long and hard in Vestavia Hills. We did have a lot. We had an ex-mayor that was against this whole process. She will now hug your neck, saying thank you. So I think you just have to go through the process, try to get the factual informations that are out there, and that's what we tried to do with our town hall meetings, was get factual information. Because with the way the world is now with social media, if you put it out there, it's the gospel. But research it and find out the correct answers. The correct answers are there. Not every city is set up for city manager, but I can tell you, in our research, we looked at the state of North Carolina, every city in North Carolina has a city manager, from the smallest one to the largest city. So, you know, it's not, it's not a bad form of government, and I can tell you, it's been a great form of government for the City of Vestavia Hills.
I think when you look at all professions, you want a professional. And one of the things that you get by hiring a professional city manager who's well-qualified is someone who comes in and ensures that your services are being delivered in a cost-efficient manner, someone who can help the commissioners or the elected body, guide them through issues that they've experienced before. And also remember that things are becoming much more technical. There's more rules and regulations. Since I've been in Dothen, we're under an EPA, excuse me, administrative order for our sewer plants. And if you've ever been through that, there is a myriad of federal regulations that you have to. So my experience in local government had prepared me for that in other cities that I've been in. So I don't think you can go wrong, but again, I'm biased because I am a 35-year city manager.
I believe the manager council form of government sets the foundation and the framework for success. However, it does take the right marriage of professional and elected body with a commitment of the elected body to give it a chance and to work, just like a marriage, work together to try to have long-term success. And I think if there's a commitment by the citizenry and the elected body, and you go through a good vetting process to pick the right candidate, there's success there and it'll pay dividends for the future of the community.
In the history of the council-manager form of government in Alabama, there has been 11 municipal elections to decide about going from a mayor-council form of government or commission form of government to a council manager or vice versa. Of those 11 elections, nine were voted by the residents of those communities to go to a city-manager form of government from a mayor-council. However, of the two that were not successful, one happened to be Daphne, which only, again, you know, in 88, they approved the council-manager form of government, and then four years later, only giving it four years, they put it back on the ballot with less than 10% of the voters who voted in the election, voted to go back to a mayor council. The only other unsuccessful vote to go to the council-manager form of government was Coleman, Alabama in 2000. They had a mayor who'd been there for two or three terms, and he felt like there was going to be a leadership void in that community, so he pushed to put on the council-manager form of government. Wasn't any burning issues, he just felt like they needed to go to a council-manager form of government. Unfortunately, it failed, but all the other eight have been approved. There are 16 city managers in Alabama, compared to 276 in Florida, 120 in Georgia, 90 in Tennessee, but thank goodness, we have more than Arkansas, which has seven, Mississippi, which has six, and Louisiana, which has none. If you think of a community that the council-manager form of government would fit well in Alabama, it would be Fairhope. You are a very unique community, well-educated, fluent, you've got high quality of life, and so you want to keep, continue to take your community to the next level. If there's other community, it's Fairhope, and it's also Madison, Alabama. And Madison, Alabama, does have a city administrator, but they're looking at going to the council-manager form of government, if not in 2020, 2024. Homewood, Alabama, Enterprise, Alabama, and maybe again, one day, Coleman. Those are some of the crown jewel communities that do not currently have a city manager that would benefit well and continue to move your community forward.
And one final thought, I look at myself in my 14 years in Dothen, think about, if you hire the right person, and that person stays, there's not a single elected official in Dothen that was there when I got there in 2004. I've had four mayors, and I've had two districts with three different commissioners in those districts. So a professional city manager who fits well with your community provides that continuity of leadership as you move forward.
Okay, we have roughly four minutes left here. I want to go back to the first question about comparing and contrasting the city administrator form of government with this form of city management. Jeff, you seem to have a little bit more that you wanted to say on that.
Wow. Let me retool my thought process. I think I've reinforced that through multiple comments. Again, I think you have to look at the motives of your chief executive officer, and those motives, they're not sinister on one versus the other. There's all well-meaning thoughts. It's about what motivates that individual. I wake up every day, and I have to please five members, five elected officials who are my five bosses. If I'm the mayor, then I have to please the entirety of the community, obviously, but I also could have a political motive to get re-elected. And so there might be some thought process that is different than what I, as a city manager, am tasked with, with moving forward with. And I have to please five and reach a consensus, which generally, again, and I'll reemphasize what I've said throughout, it creates less discord. There's less back and forth in a negative manner. It's very positive conversation toward achieving a common goal.
All right, that concludes our town hall for tonight. Just a reminder, these were questions that came from the community. If you'd like to see them and read through them again, they will be posted to the city's website FAQ page and also on fox10tv.com. Our panelists are going to be here for roughly 20 minutes. They'll be available if you want to come up to them individually and speak, but they will need to leave sharply at a certain time, and I'll let you know when that is.